Like to call the meeting order. Mrs. Burns, roll call.
Mr. Sullivan?
Present.
Mr. Feather?
Here.
Mr. Allen?
Here.
Mrs. Bowman?
Miss Boyle?
Here.
Ms. Hollenbach?
Here.
Mr. Kovitz?
Here.
Mr. Merrington?
Here.
Mr. Perattano?
Present.
The quorum is present.
Like to start the meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
The Board met in executive session this evening prior to this meeting to discuss matters of employment and potential or current litigation. Our district mission statement says that the Shammany community builds futures by empowering each child to become a productive citizen and a lifelong learner. Mrs. Burns, any announcements?
No announcements.
Thank you. That brings us to the superintendent's report.
Okay, let me give you a couple of updates. Maple Point, a couple of points of interest. They, along with some of our other schools, participated in National Law Enforcement Appreciation Day back earlier in January honoring members of the Middletown Police Department by inviting them into school for lunch. The Shammany works very closely with our local police force. This is both the Middletown and Lower South. Fertabar, similarly, elementary school did something in recognition of Martin Luther King Day as a service project. They put together goodie bags for the local officers at Lower Southampton Police Department. So we do appreciate the relationship that we have with the police and we're appreciative of our students were able to act in those fashions. Here at Maple Point also, I'd be remiss not to talk about the wonderful work that took place on Martin Luther King Day. It was a day off for our students, but many, many hundreds were here with adults putting together bags there called blessing bags that were part of an effort where these bags then get distributed by Bucks County and Philadelphia Angels in Motion. It's a volunteer group that reaches out to the homeless. And our students, there's a wonderful video once again by Chris Stanley on our Facebook. She is showing the sheer community building that took place and the effort that was collaborative across the young people and the adults that were here on Martin Luther King Day. And I just want to applaud them as just one of the many service opportunities that do take place across our district, but it was certainly a point of spotlight. Sandburg's got a new website that their students are running, What's Up Sandburg? And there's a link in my superintendent's report that will get you there, but it's a nice student-driven opportunity. Our high school musicians are participating in both a band festival already that took place and a choir orchestra festival that will be coming up later in January. We wish them good luck. It's part of the Music Educators Association District festivals, and there's a whole list of high school students who participate in that program. And we congratulate those who participated already and wish the others good luck. I do have an update in my report on the fact that Pennsylvania's plan for ESSA was approved by the federal government. What's nice about that is it allows Pennsylvania to continue to give good direction and guidance to the school districts so that we can make sure that we abide by what's necessary at the federal level so that the federal connection and especially the federal funding that comes along with some of that programming continues for us. I have a late addition. The Shammany cheerleaders were in action. And the Shammany cheer placed in the top 10 in the PIAA state competition in Hershey. That's, from what I understand, a first-time effort to get at that state level. And so to perform and finish in the top 10 was an exciting accomplishment for our cheer team, and we congratulate them. And then finally, I want to spotlight the fact that this is School Director Recognition Month. And so each of our school directors has a certificate indicating that we're honoring them. In this case, I'm looking at Mr. Sullivan's Marty Sullivan, who volunteers time and talents for the betterment of the public education of our community. It's a simple statement, but we really do appreciate the volunteer effort that all of our board members put forth. So each has that certificate, spotlighting their work that happens all year round, but spotlighting that in January. And I also want to add, for our four new board members, we actually gave out our We Build Future pins to all nine board members, but we're going to add four more people as recipients to our We Build Futures. These pins are given out to individuals who are nominated in our school community who support our district mission. Mr. Sullivan reads that district mission at the beginning of the meeting, and we really try to abide by that across the district in all 10 of our schools. And our teachers do some phenomenal work. Our support staff does great work in support of our kids, and our board members certainly fit that bill as well. And so Ms. Bowman, Mr. Kovitz, Mr. Mannington, and Mr. Allen, some pins for you as well. We Build Futures, a hard hat. Nice job. Thank you. That's all I have, Mr. Sullivan. Thank you.
Thank you. Now we come to the public comments section. Mrs. Burns?
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, board members. My name's Tom Tostie. I live at Oxford Drive in Langhorne. I'm also a Middletown Township Supervisor. And one of the things, we've been doing a couple of new things this year since our reorganization. One of the things we did was, instead of just appointing people to our planning commissions and our zoning commissions, what we did was we brought people in, we interviewed them, and then we selected from the interviewing process who would be putting on them boards. Thing that we started at our last commission was a Citizens Traffic Commission. And what that's going to be, it's going to be a five-member board that is going to try to give us some of the problems that we're having in the township as far as traffic and try to alleviate some of that kind of stuff. But the one thing that we did at our first meeting, at our reorganization meeting on January 2nd, was we appointed a liaison to the school board, and that would have been me. I'm the liaison to the school board. And I'm here to introduce myself to you, and what we're trying to do with this is we're just trying to partner with the school board. One of the things is we're all one community. We're the Shammany community. And we're trying to partner to try to just see what we can do maybe as both the school board and as a board of supervisors, to see what we can do to make the township better if there's a way that we can make things better. Some of the things that Mr. Jones said was community building. That's kind of the things that we're looking at as supervisors, is community building. I had mentioned at the board meeting, our girl soccer team took second place in the state championship. And you know what? It would have been a good thing to bring them into our board meeting and recognize them for their accomplishments and things like that. Some of the things that they said about the MLK Day, our students here at the Maple Point, it's a great thing that our students are doing, and you know what? Let's recognize them at our school board, or our township board meeting. So that's kind of what we're trying to do. I do want to introduce myself. I do have some business cards that I'll pass around to all of yous if you want to stay in touch with me. I do want to let you know, I mean, I do recognize that we're two different boards, and we're not trying to get involved with the board. We're just trying to partner. So I do want to make that point that we aren't trying to govern. We're not, we don't want to govern. We want to just partner with some of the things that maybe our communities can do to build a better Middletown, build a better Shammany, build a better community in what we're trying to do. So if any of yous had any questions or if anything that you want, I mean, I'm here. Do I plan on attending every meeting? No, I don't plan on attending every meeting. And it's not that I don't want to. It's like, I just don't want to be one of them guys that are just sitting in here and overlooking and being one of them. I just want to partner. So maybe I'll stop in quarterly and give you an update on some of the things that we're doing, or maybe I'll do it every six months, just to stop in and just let you know what we're doing and the people that we're recognizing. And if there's something that we could be doing, if we're missing something, like I said, like, I don't know if you're aware, but that big billboard when you're going down the superhighway right by the Shammany High School, we get advertisements on there. One of the things that we did last year, Coach Wilmont called me, and you had the football game there, the All-Star Football Game there, asked if we could advertise that up on that thing. As a township, we get two advertisements on that. So I mean, that's something like with the girl soccer, we could have recognized them with that if we were a partner to that and put it up there on the school board, just congratulating them for what they've done and their accomplishments. So that's the kind of things we're looking for. So like I said, if anybody had any questions for me, I'll be glad to answer them or try to answer them. If I can't answer them, I won't, but otherwise, I'll let you get back to your business.
No other comment? Brings us to the routine matters. I guess I would like to make a motion that items 2.01, 2.06, we approve in bulk. Second? All in favor? Opposed? Okay. That passes nine to zero. Brings us to item number three, Personnel Administrative.
Resolved that the Shammany School Board of Directors hereby approves the resignation of Dr. Gloria Hancock Assistant Superintendent to be effective June 30th, 2018. Dr. Hancock has served the district for the last four years.
Does anyone want to make a motion? Anyone want to second it? All in favor?
Questions, comments, concerns?
Questions, comments, concerns?
Got to get some training going on here. It's with a heavy heart that I made that resolution to the board for acceptance. I was one of the original board members that hired Dr. Hancock, along with others that felt she had done an extremely important and effective job here in the Shammany. The five-to-eight construction, the job she did with that was just phenomenal. It was unbelievable what she put together. You know, back in the day before Gloria was here, you know, the Shammany had really dropped in our scores, and we really took on an aggressive program to try and redevelop our curriculum, bring a new curriculum, and really, you know, really brought the Shammany back to where it should be. And we still got more work to do, but we couldn't have done it without her. So she is going to stay through the rest of her contract, which expires in June, and I just want to wish her well in any endeavor that she will be taking on in the future. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to include a comment. Dr. Hancock and I had some, we had numerous conversations, and not every one of them were agreeable, but I have to say that I believe that she did an exemplary job in what it was that we asked and expected her to do when she stepped up to take on the role that she did. And I have to say that I thank her for that, and I thank her for being there and being a part of our district and doing what she did for our school district and helping us move to the point where we are now, and so we can take this and move forward. And I thank her for that.
I'd like to add my two cents to that, too. It's also with a very heavy heart to accept Gloria's leaving us. I had hoped to work with her for the next three, four decades. I just enjoyed our conversations. I was particularly proud of the work she did, of her, what we put on her. She just kind of took it in stride. We lost our superintendent. She stepped up. She didn't need to do that. She could have asked us to look elsewhere. It's quite a burden that she took on for us, and she's done an exemplary job. I wish her very well in the future, and I certainly hope she stays in touch, and I
All right, there is a motion.
I wanted to add my thank you to Dr. Hancock. She was there when we needed her and did an extraordinary job, and I just, and we will all miss her.
All right, there's a motion on the floor? Dave second? Dave second? All in favor? Aye.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Ms. Bowman?
Abstain.
Ms. Boyle? Mr. Feather?
Yes.
Mrs. Hollenbach? Mr. Kovitz?
Yes.
Mr. Merrington?
Yes.
Mr. Perattano?
Abstain.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Six yes, three abstain.
Motion passes. That brings us to the next section, Personnel, Certificated. And I make a motion for, to accept 4.01 to 4.05.
For clarification, can we read them so everybody knows what they are?
4.01 is retirements, resignations, and end of assignments. You want them read that way? Okay, titles, okay. 4.02 is leave of absence. 4.03 is revised return from leave. 4.04 is appointments, and 4.05 is co-curricular appointments. Any second? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passes nine to zero. There were none. Brings us to Personnel Support. Mrs. Hollenbach?
I'd like to make a motion to approve items 5.01 through 5.06, which are retirements, resignation, end of assignments. 5.02 is leave of absence. 5.03 revised return from leave. 5.04 appointments. 5.05 co-curricular appointments, and 5.06 ancillary appointments.
All in favor? Second?
I second.
Any questions, comments, concerns? Thanks, Steve. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstentions?
It's a tough crowd.
It's a learning experience. I'm fine with it. All right, that passes nine to zero. Business operations, Mrs. Hollenbach?
Education Development.
Education Development.
Okay.
Would you mind reading each one of them as the text of the resolution?
Okay. I'd like to make a motion to approve items 6.01, which is overnight trips, and 6.02, which is the confidential settlement agreement. Did you want me to read that? Okay. Whereas according to Board Policy 618, trips extending overnight are permitted by authorization of the Board of School Directors only. Now therefore be it resolved that the Shammany Board of School Directors hereby approves the Shammany High School Model UN Club Trip to visit the United Nations on May 10th to the 12th, New York, New York. Read them together or separate? Okay, I got it. Whereas the Shammany School District has developed a private and confidential agreement with the family of student 792525 to address educational concerns. Now therefore be it resolved that the Shammany Board of School Directors hereby approves the items detailed in said agreement.
Need a second? Any questions, comments, or concerns?
Yes. I have a question regarding item 6.01. On the overnight trip, we had, my last term on the board, we had started a policy of actually having the chaperones. We knew who they were. I'm sure someone does. I just want to be sure we haven't dropped the ball on that.
I have it here. It's Mr. Stoner, who's the teacher attending with the students.
Any other questions, comments, or concerns?
Is he the only chaperone on this trip? And how many students do we have?
Ten, ten to sixteen students.
Thank you.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Those two motions pass nine to zero. That brings us to Business Operations now.
I'd like, whereas the term of certain members serving on the Bucks County Technical School Authority on behalf of Shammany School Directors has expired, and whereas it is necessary to appoint individuals to fill these vacancies, now therefore be it resolved that the Shammany Board of School Directors hereby approves Michael Bender and Ron Rudy for a five-year term on the Bucks County Technical School Authority.
Want a second? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Passes nine to zero.
Item 7.02, the approval of the 2016-17 Audit Report. Whereas the audit for the Shammany School District for the fiscal year ended June 30th, 2017, has been prepared by Maile LLP, and whereas Maile LLP provided the board members and public an overview of the report and answered questions at the January 9th, 2018 Public Work Session. Now therefore be it resolved that the Shammany Board of School Directors hereby approves the attached audit report for the fiscal year ended June 30th, 2017, and in accordance with Section 24-2408 of the School Code.
You'd a second?
Second.
Questions, comments, or concerns? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Passes nine to zero.
7.03, 2018-19 Proposed Preliminary Budget. Whereas in accordance with Act 1 of 2006, the Board of School Directors received a proposed preliminary budget for the 2018-19 fiscal year, and whereas the school district did on January 12th, 2018, publish a notice of intent to adopt proposed preliminary budget of the school district as required by Act 1, 2006 of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. And whereas in order to further comply with the Pennsylvania Department of Education Interpretation of Act 1 of 2006, the Board of School Directors must adopt a proposed preliminary budget. Now therefore be it resolved that the Shammany Board of School Directors hereby adopts 2018-19 Proposed Preliminary Budget in accordance with Act 1 of 2006, and it will be made available for public inspection beginning January 24th, 2018 as required by law.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Any questions, comments, or concerns?
I would just like to make a comment to everybody that this is proposed preliminary. For anybody that doesn't understand that, we still have a lot of work to do, and the final budget will not be approved until sometime in June. So we still have plenty of work to do. These are just proposed preliminary numbers right now.
Thank you for that.
One additional question for the administration. At this point, are we asking for exemptions, or that is at a later date?
That happens at the preliminary budget approval, which will happen February 13th.
Thank you for that question. Okay. All in favor of? Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Passes nine to zero. Sorry, one more.
7.04, Sunday Facility Usage. Whereas according to Board Policy, 800 facilities fields may not be scheduled on Sundays without school board approval. Now therefore be it resolved that the Shammany Board of School Directors hereby approves the Sunday usage for RISE Championships Samba Tournament on Sunday, March 11th, 2018, at the Shammany High School Gym Number Three, which is located at 2001 Old Lincoln Highway, Langhorne, PA 19047.
Can I get a second? Any questions, comments, and concerns? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Passes nine to zero. That brings us to, any other board business? Brings us to the second period of public comment. Mr. Rotis, we knew you were coming up at some point.
Thank you very much. I'm Steve Rotis. I live in Village of Flowers Mill in Langhorne. Luckily, I had a couple of other things, but they were answered prior to the meeting. I do want to talk about Dr. Hancock for a second. I thought she was fantastic during the, the many jobs that she was given. She really, she worked very hard at pleasing as many people as she could, but staying within the parameters of what she felt was her job. And I just think she'll sorely be missed by the district. And finally, I just have a question on the audit report, which is, I don't know if it's posted yet on the website tomorrow? Okay. I just wanted to know, does that include the 10-year comparisons? When does that one come out? Okay, but it's the same, isn't it, Maile, that does it? Oh, okay. All right, thanks. That answers my questions. Thank you very much.
Suzie Drake, high school English teacher and FT Vice President, taxpayer alum. I just wanted to mention, I was fortunate to participate with the Teen Peace Summit and Social Awareness Summit that the Peace Center put on, on the Sunday of Martin Luther King Weekend. Myself and some other teachers from the high school participated, along with a cadre of 23 students. Some kids were from a Girl Scout troop in Questing, but they came running over, they're like, "We're in the Shammany, too." And a bunch of the high school students who were members of the Play Wiccan, Interact Club, the Gender Equality Club, Diversity Pride Club, who were there to talk about issues that are in the world. They were part of 500 students who were there from Centennial, Ben Salem, Bristol Township. They heard speakers from different ethnicities, from different cultures, and it was truly an empowering event. In the pizza afterwards, yeah, the kids went off into breakout sessions, and the geezers were in their own breakout session. And it was just so interesting to hear what everybody had to say. All the kids said, you know, they would definitely go back and do it next year. So I thank the district for providing the funding to make this a overt effort to be involved instead of just find your way there on a Sunday of a holiday weekend. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public? That brings us to the board comments section of the meeting.
I'm going to start first, if that's okay.
It's okay.
Thank you. I'd like to talk about the Nishamony Education Foundation. We're actually conducting a first annual alumni meeting and hoping that we can include and, and generate a lot of input and a lot of involvement from the community, from our alumni, so that we can continue the great work that this organization, this group is actually doing for our students, for our schools, and for our community. So if you know anyone that is an alumni, it's posted on our website, please get involved, please help us out, please do what you can so that we can continue doing the things that we do for our students, so that we can move this forward and continue the great work that our school district is actually doing for our kids. Thank you. I apologize, I don't have the date in front of me. Chris Stanley is actually heading this. It is on the website. I have it, but I don't have it in front of me, and I apologize for that.
This evening, before the, the school board meeting, a bunch of former and current board members met at Miller Elementary School to remember Mr. Robert Senna, who sat on this board for a number of years. Rob passed away last year, and we were able to establish a plaque on the wall of the library in memory of Rob. His wife and his two children were able to attend, along with Rob's mother and father, Rob's brother, and his wife. And we were able to share some time, where we all talked about our memories of Rob and how much we appreciated his service. I wanna thank Mr. Stanley and Mr. Jones for organizing it and putting together the plaque. And I just wanna read into the record the words that are on the plaque. "In memory of Robert J. Senna Jr., 1975 to 2017, the Nishamony Board of School Directors, 2015 to 2017. Devoted husband, loving father, and active community volunteer. A friend to many, and a passionate advocate for the children of Nishamony. Recognized for his outstanding service and dedication to the students, staff, and community of the Nishamony School District. Dedicated, January 23rd, 2018." So, on behalf of the district and the community, I wanna again appreciate Rob's service and in his memory. And it was a, you know, sad thing, but it was also nice to, to talk to the family and, and hear from them, and, and it was just nice so many people could make it, so it was very good. Other than that, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
February 7th at 6:30, you want to answer? Okay, okay. Thank you.
You know, I wanted to thank Steve for also putting the motion forward before we got on to, to honor Rob. Rob became a good friend of mine, as we were, as many of you know, as we were going through our campaigning and all the politicking that led us here. But just to mirror a little bit about what I said earlier at, at the ceremony, I admired Rob. He was a bit of a mentor to me, and, and I'm really very honored that I can continue where he left off. I know he was a big supporter of mine, and he, he wanted me to be sitting exactly where I am right now. So hopefully I can make good on that. And secondly, I know that we're, we're one district, we're two townships as well, and I wanted to...
We're six municipalities.
Thank you, I stand corrected. I've been wrong before, and, there we go. Six municipalities, one district. I wanted to thank Mr. Tosti for, for coming out, and thank Middletown Township for bringing someone forward. It's, I think it's, it's really nice to be able to partner with the local municipalities and to work together. So I'm excited about that and what that could, the possibilities that that could bring.
Since no one else brought it up, I do wanna thank the district for the recognition. It's not about getting a pat on the back. It's, you wonder sometimes, we sit in these meetings, we, we go at each other pretty hard sometimes, but ultimately, I think it's our love and our passion for the Nishamony community that, that always wins out in the end. And it's, it's nice to be remembered for that. Thank you.
Thank you.
And again, February 7th, 6:30 PM is the meeting for the alumni. Thank you very much.
If no further comment, I make a motion to adjourn the meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? [laughing]